Is everybody ready?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I will call the meeting of the Everman City Council to order. It is Tuesday, August 13th, 2024. The time is 6:01. If everybody please rise for a moment of silence before I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so consent agenda, we have none. Under Presentations, item A, Proclamation celebrating 48th anniversary for Hickory Stick Barbecue. I did present this to them this morning, so I'll go ahead and read this just for the record. Proclamation in celebration of Hickory Stick Barbecue, 48 years of business, where it is our privilege to recognize those exemplary businesses that through their unwavering commitment to excellence are a credit to this city and whereas one should notable, one such notable establishment is Hickory Stick Barbecue, an exemplary member of the community of Everman and is celebrating 48 years of business this year. And whereas Hickory Stick Barbecue was opened in 1976 by current owner Mark Jones and his father Johnny Andrew Jones, the restaurant has become a true landmark within our community. And whereas the hard work, dedication, and passion of the Hickory Stick Barbecue family has made this establishment a true treasure, one that has stood the test of time and continues to thrive in our ever-changing world. And whereas Hickory Stick Barbecue has served as a beacon within our community, a place for families, friends, and neighbors to come together and enjoy good food and great company, now therefore be proclaimed by the city council, the city of Everman, that we recognize and congratulate Hickory Stick Barbecue and the Jones family on an amazing accomplishment of 48 years of business. We urge all citizens to join us in recognizing Hickory Stick Barbecue and reflect on their invaluable contributions to the community in which we live, work, and play. Okay, next item is recognition of Human Resources Director Jennifer Nateros on achieving her International Public Management Association for Human Resources Certified Professional IPMA CP certification. Is that what this says?
Yes.
Okay. Hold on, I want to look facial. Next item, Susan's comments. We have none. So we'll drop down to discussion items. Item A, Discuss and Review Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2025.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we have provided each of you, can you turn my mic down in here just a little bit? There's not a crowd, so we're good. Provided each of you with a copy of the budget book. Once again, I want to commend Susan Helgason on doing a phenomenal job at putting this book together. This is absolutely beautiful work product before you. Not only is it a beautiful work product, but it's a reflection of the amount of tedious work that Susan has put in, the many, many hours that Susan has put in at finalizing and preparing this budget before you based off your guidance. One thing I want to, or actually several things I just want to bring your attention to, very first page when you open the book is the budget cover letter. Once the budget has been officially passed and adopted, this will be updated in a final book that'll be retained in the finance office for adoption. We're at the record vote. Once again, the proposed property tax rate for this year is a one cent reduction over the total tax rate from prior year of 1.026080. So that has not changed since our last meeting. Following that, you'll find a table of contents. If you turn to page one, this is going to be really a highlight of both city councils, city departments, city administration, lots of wonderful photographs recapturing this past year and the progress that the city has made over the past year. Lots of really good information in here, really talking about all the milestones that we've met as a city. Page nine is an organizational, updated organizational chart. And obviously, I'm not going to read through any of this, but just kind of bringing it all to your attention. Page 10 through 12 really highlights our mission statement, vision statement, and core values for the city. Page 13 is the city manager letter to city council regarding the budget. You can certainly read through that, talks about our current budget performance, our achievements, and our goals and objectives as well. Page 15 consists of the city planning calendar, which if you look for today's date, August 13th, we are right on schedule as planned for distribution of the public, I'm sorry, distribution of the budget books. Our special called meeting will be on August the 20th for a public hearing on the tax rate and the proposed budget. And we will ask for your approval of the tax rate and adoption of the budget on the You can read through the rest, several pieces of information throughout the first part of this book, including the history of Everman, organizational structure, lots of definitions, some policies and procedures related to finance that you all are well aware of and have already approved. If you'll grab that first tab and switch over to general fund. Just like what you've seen in your workbooks, you're going to get provided with an explanation here of where general fund revenue sources come from, what those revenue sources are, and an identification chart down below that Susan has put together, kind of giving you a percentage breakout of where our revenue sources are for general fund. Flipping over, this is no different than the budget workbooks that you have been provided previously, breaking it out by each department. I think we've highlighted some of the changes that we've made following the revenues meeting. Page 68 here says general fund revenue five-year forecast. Keep in mind, this is a forecast, so this is no guarantee of what our funding will look like going into the future, but gives you a general idea of what we can anticipate going forward. And then page 69 through the remainder is all just like your workbook has been. Any questions about the general fund portion? Okay. Next. Next tab is special revenue fund. Again, same thing, five-year forecast. Again, this is solely a forecast. She's forecasted each individual line item, or I'm sorry, each individual fund, not all together. And then the breakout following that, just like what we've seen in our budget workbooks. Special revenue funds includes everything from our TECO fund, economic development, TIF, street improvement, and crime control district funds. Any questions on any of those? All right. Next tab is debt service fund. There's only, I think, two pages in this, yep, two pages here. One is a general fund debt service, the next one is your water sewer debt service? No?
No.
Oh, revenue and expenditures, I'm sorry. Got you. Okay. Next is water sewer fund. Susan's provided a explanation of enterprise funds here for you, explaining enterprise funds and how that operates and the working philosophy behind it. Also, a little bit of a recap there on the funding, followed by a five-year forecast as well. And then the working document, just like what you've had in your workbooks. Next tab is capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan, we did change this up just a little bit. I've made some administrative updates here to reflect the projects that have been completed. So projects that have been completed as a part of the capital improvement process have been pulled out of this plan, just to clarify, so that we were nearing the time to renew this plan. So we had several projects that were completed. It just made more sense to go ahead and remove them off the page to clean it up so you knew what projects were in here. And I did go ahead and add in here underneath on page 114, underneath urgent products, projects at the bottom, the department is police department. I did add in the new animal services shelter to be listed in here because I know that that's been in the works and what we're working on, so I wanted to make sure that that was inclusive of the CIP and felt comfortable making that administrative update based off your votes and approvals to seek funding for that. Attached to that CIP, we also included the land use assumptions and capital improvements plan that is associated with our water sewer fund that is broken out separately because the city assesses impact fees based off this capital improvement plan. So these, both these plans are coupled together here in this section of the budget book. We did not previously include the LUA and the capital improvements plan within our budget book previously. It's important that we should, or we should do it, and we did it this year. So that's inclusive in here as well. Any questions? Again, we're not asking for approval tonight. Again, this is just distribution of the budget book. You have plenty of time to review this before we ask for your vote to adopt it. Again, we will have a public hearing next Tuesday, the 20th, on the proposed tax rate and the proposed budget. So there will actually be two public hearings. And then the following week, on the 27th, during the regular council meeting, we'll ask for your approval, adoption of the tax rate and approval of the budget. Correct. I'm sorry, approval for budget is the following. Do you have any questions at all? Any concerns? Okay. Awesome job, Susan. It's an amazing book. Good job.
Okay, so next item of discussion is discuss and consider an ordinance creating a mayor's youth advisory council. This was an email I received from the Forest Hill mayor, and they were asking if we'd be interested in getting on board with them to also do it in our city. The tri cities, I've already told her we need to maybe do it, the meetings we've been having to maybe get Kennedale involved also, so, but.
And Mayor, we did provide with the packet, we did provide a copy of the ordinance, and I'm assuming, Victoria, you're probably familiar with this ordinance, with the ordinance that Forest Hill adopted, so you can review it and make any recommended changes. I think their mayor's target was, she was looking to work with, I believe, OD Wyatt High School directly, and we were going to seek to work with Everman High School directly. And then Kennedale, I think, would likely work with Kennedale High School. And some of the administrative talks that we've had is it would be great for these councils to meet separately, but then also have opportunities to work together, just like councils do on various projects. So I think it would be great exposure for them. We did already have a conversation with Dr. Donaldson, the superintendent for the school district, and she is supportive of this idea as well, thinks it'd be a great avenue for us to connect with our, with our youth and bring them in. So I think for staff, we would just seek direction from, if council wishes for us to move forward with this, and we'll request the city attorney to update an ordinance for us reflecting Everman and bring it back to you. We could do it as soon as the next meeting, I bet. You think that, yeah?
Is everybody good to moving forward with it? And we just need consensus, right? So.
One thing to bear in mind and to think about is that the ordinance does require that there is a city council member that serves as a liaison with this council. It doesn't necessarily have to be the mayor. I think it can be the mayor, but it doesn't have to be the mayor. I don't know if you want to discuss that before we bring it back for a vote, or you can deliberate that on whenever you pass the ordinance. That's up to you.
Well, I mean, I hate to say it, but I think it'd be good for either Susan or Miriam since they're with the school district. Just my thoughts, so.
Did that hurt, the bust? It just.
I mean, if no, I mean, if you don't want to do it, I'll do it, but I just, I just thought, you know, you're down there anyway, and you're probably familiar with a lot of these kids, and they, there may be a connection there already, so, but, okay, so we're good to moving forward with that.
Okay. We will do it.
Item C, review and discuss potential amendments, code ordinances, article four, garage sales.
So I know we have briefly discussed garage sales in the past and some recommended changes. This is specifically coming back to you because we have recently been fielding several complaints. We have a couple of local businesses that are repeatedly conducting garage sales on commercial property that aren't necessarily in compliance with the ordinance. We've had to shut them down. Frankly, in my opinion, I think they are trying to skirt the law. What we've, what we've had before is we've had a couple of commercial businesses where they have purchased items intentionally off of Amazon or some other distributor, opened those packages, and then turned around and resold those items. They're doing this in an effort to really skirt around the, the comptroller's requirements for operating a business and generating revenue. Our ordinance currently strictly prohibits the selling of items that were solely purchased for the purpose of resale. So we were able to articulate it under our ordinance and under the fact that we had evidence by their own statement that they purchased these items off of Amazon to open them and resell them. Frankly, in my opinion, and again, this is just my opinion, it makes some of our businesses where this is occurring look like a flea market and not a legitimate business. We have great opportunities within the communities, within our craft sales, or groups that come in and help us out with our activities. That's a spot to do that in. I think doing it on a commercial front is not necessarily the best environment for us, and it hurts our local businesses, particularly our small ones, because I don't think it's our, it's not actually our businesses that are doing this. They're just agreeing to allow the use of their property for outside individuals to come into our city to conduct this business. So while we were reviewing this, I wanted to bring it to your attention that our ordinance does allow for garage sales on commercial property as so long as it's being sold. It has to be personal tangible property. I will tell you, that's hard on an enforcement standard. It's going to be very difficult to go before a judge and argue that it's not personal tangible property. If they've opened it, they've bought it, it's, it's very difficult to prove that that's not personal tangible property. So that won't stand for long. It's going to become difficult for us to enforce. So if the, if the desire is to kind of avoid this, then I would, I would make a recommendation and of course, look to the attorney for guidance on this, but maybe prohibit garage sales on commercial property or restrict the number of times that they can do this on a commercial property. There's a few different avenues we can go, but of course, that would be up to you and in your guidance there. But currently, they are allowed to have garage sales on commercial property so long as it occurs in the parking lot or on the sidewalk of the commercial business.
So we're still doing the only four times a year, right?
Yes.
Okay, are they doing it more than that?
No, but they are doing it the maximum. And the other part too is, is that what we have seen is they'll do it on one business and then they're moving that same sale because it's a third party under somebody else's name to a neighboring business. They're kind of jumping around, and they're able to skirt the law that way. It's not illegal. They're not violating the ordinance by doing that.
Okay, I would like to consider, wow, my mic is really hot. I'd like to consider not allowing them on commercial properties, and if a commercial business, a legitimate one in the city, has a need for some kind of garage sale activity, they can come to the city council and ask for an exemption to that. Like we do with the.
Can we do that like an SUA? Okay.
I mean, and it would have to be for a really good reason, not just because we want to have one.
Sure, I mean, I don't think I would.
Like fill the boot type of a thing?
Well, there are, there, you know, we have businesses, if they're, if they want to do a liquidation type activity because their business is going out, they're a small business, would not be opposed, you know, that, that makes sense, but that's not what's occurring. What's occurring is, and, and the most recent one we had to shut down, they had a truck, they've had a. They had a truck, they've had a moving truck that brought in all the items. They set up the canopies out in the parking lot of the business. They unloaded everything on tables out in front and sold everything out there, really skirting sales tax and comptroller requirements and then city ordinance requirements, operating an illegitimate business frankly, and, and using the cover of garage sale to do it.
And who knows if it's not something that just fell off of a truck somewhere?
Stolen, right?
Yeah, make me say the word right.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. No, that's out.
Yeah, so I agree with Susan. I say, you know, if it's a, if it's a legit company that says we're going to do a liquidation sale with our items, then to go ahead and get grant them permission.
Right.
Yeah, I agree also. And, you know, it's hard enough because we have had even residential's that have done that same thing. I, for instance, know one area that the garage is just full of boxes, and they bring them out and they try to sell stuff, so.
Right. And, and again, because of the way that the ordinance is worded, the definition of personal tangible property, if somebody has purchased something, that has become personal tangible property, it is very difficult to prove, it's nearly impossible frankly, to prove to the municipal judge that they purchased it solely for the intent to resell it.
Is that a residential or business?
I brought it to you specifically for business, but we can certainly adjust residential how you would like as well. You know, whatever, whatever changes you would like to consider, we can discuss.
No, I was just asking because upon the section, that was 192, 2A, it was saying no personal property shall be displayed, offered, for sale or sold within an open garage or in a front yard.
Let me read that whole section.
And then he says all displays shall be within the confines of the, of the, of the house.
It's, in this portion, it's talking about estate sales. So it says the duration, number and duration of sales, the number of garage sales on property shall not exceed four days, I'm sorry, shall not exceed four days during any calendar period from January 1st to December 31st. The duration of each sale shall not exceed three consecutive calendar days, except that if the sale is an estate sale, then the property may be displayed, offered for sale or sold for a continuous period not to exceed seven consecutive days, but under the following terms and conditions, cannot be displayed from the garage. So if they're talking about an estate sale for seven days, then under those terms, cannot be displayed, offered, or sold within an open garage or in the front yard. Has to be contained within the house. But for a standard three-day garage sale, they can sell from the garage or, or the front yard.
So do we have a consensus to move forward with the recommendations that you made? Everybody good? Okay.
Victoria, is there any other guidance you would like to get or any questions?
I don't think so. I think I'm...
Okay. Is there any way to strengthen the language on personal tangible property when we're talking about residential?
There really isn't.
Yeah. Okay. Is four, currently we allow four garage sales a year. Is that, is that enough? Is that too much? Do you want to let more? Do you want to do fewer?
I would ask more than four, what we drill this off.
So just mainly address the commercial properties. Okay, we'll do it.
Okay, so next item, item D, report on planned community events.
All right, so we've got several things that are coming up. First off, September 11th is right around the corner. A few years back, we started our, a, a tradition of doing a remembrance walk through Pittman Park. We are planning to conduct that again. That will be open to the community. So we would encourage anyone and everyone to come out that would like to join us. Our police and fire departments will be there, conducting the walk in full uniform and firefighters in full gear, just like we have before. It, I don't have the, the time just yet. We'll, we'll put this out here pretty quickly. I'm waiting on Chief Watley to get back to me on the exact time.
We will do it on the 11th.
Yeah, we will do it on the 11th. Yes, it'll be in the evening. We try to not compete with many of the other September 11th events that occur on that day. There's many tower climbs, stair climbs that occur all over Tarrant County. So we, we want to try to not compete with those and, and do something specifically for our community. So we'll, we'll do it in the evening time like we have before, and we will gather at the memorial park to conduct that. Homecoming Parade is coming up, although the parade date has not been finalized just yet. We're still kind of waiting on the final decision on which day they're going to do the parade. Homecoming is September the 20th. What I wanted to find out from council, we've kind of uttered it a little bit after, each year after the parade, it's always been talked about, oh, we should have done a city float or a council float or, or participated a little bit more. So I'm trying to get on the ball early. Is there a desire for council to want to do a float this year or a city float at all this year? If so, I can put forth the work to try to get what may be needed to do that. I just wanted to find out from you what your desire was this year as far as homecoming parade.
I think it'd be cool. We need to show our faces. We don't want to be out there. Well, yeah. September 20th?
Homecoming itself is on September 20th. I'm thinking the parade will likely be either Monday, the Monday before or the Wednesday before. They usually try not to do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays because of JV games that are occurring. So likely it'll either be on Monday evening or Wednesday evening. But if council would like to do a float of some sort, then I will work on setting that up and getting that secured and push out some information.
I think it'd be cool. Yeah. I can do it.
All right.
Throw can?
All right. And then the last thing I've got is our Halloween Festival. So the Halloween Festival is coming up. We've scheduled that for Thursday, October 24th. You know, we've, we've kind of changed locations the last few years. Last year, we did it here at the Civic Center. The downside is that usually early voting is also occurring right at that time, which prohibits us from really doing anything inside the Civic Center because of early voting location. So we've done it outside. Years before that, we did it at Johnson Park. Weather has sometimes proven to be a little bit of a challenge too, if we have some rain. So this year, we looked to partner with Timberview Farmstead, and they have agreed to allow us to host this event on the farm. And I truly do think it's going to provide a great ambiance for the event. I don't know to what capacity yet, but they are going to have several of their amenities opened up as an option for kids to go and check out. They do have many fall plans, I'm sorry, many activities planned for the fall. They do plan to have like a pumpkin patch and several different things out there. So I think it'll provide a great atmosphere to host this event. And they have a very large awning that will provide us a safe space if, for whatever reason, the weather turns bad, we'll still have a good location to do this inside. So that is, that is our plan for Thursday, October the 24th. It'll start at 6:00 PM. Staff will be working that day to conduct the setup and everything out there. So city is still coordinating it. We're working with Timberview, so we'll handle the management of the event. They're just allowing us to essentially use their space. So that's all I've got for upcoming events.
Okay, next item, consideration possible action. Item A, Resolution Number 2024-08-01, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas, establishing a charter review commission, establishing charter review commission guidelines and providing for an effective date. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution Number 2024-08-01 as read.
Second.
Most remaining second, do we have any discussion?
So we need the names that the council...
We, we would need those upon passage of the resolution. So if you're going to pass this resolution tonight, we're going to look for, for those appointments tonight.
One thing I did ask Craig to remove is, we had the stipulation in there, we wanted people that were not sitting currently on any of our boards, but then we have individuals that sit on this committee last time, and we were alienating them. So we did remove that because...
Well, it has, it has not officially been removed from this proposed, so we'll, we'll need to, we would need to amend the motion to, to do that. I'm sorry.
Okay, so what do you...
The, maybe we were going to do a requirement that it had to be fresh blood, people that have not served or currently serving on any of our committees, but I think we need to remove that. I would still like for us to try to bring in new bodies, but, you know, like Mr. Pink Barnett and Judy Graham, they both sit on it last go around, and I, I think it's only fitting to allow them to sit on it again.
Sure, they've got a little experience with it.
So, but...
Well, why not wait a month and put it in the newsletter to see if anyone would be interested in, any of the other, any of the other residents might be interested in putting on?
Well, the thought was that each council member would come up with a nomination for the committee. So I would just, we, we need to get moving on it pretty quick in case we have to put it up for vote. Because if we make charter amendments, then it's going to have to be on, we'd vote on it in, wouldn't be, wouldn't be November, would it?
No, it would be on the May election, which would require us to really complete the amendments before the end of the year to get it to Tarrant County to have the ballot language constructed and done. So we are cramped for time if we look to achieve any amendments for the May election cycle. Now, if the goal, if we're not in a rush, we don't necessarily have to meet the, the May election cycle, and we can kind of expand this out a little bit, and we can look to meet it for May of 2026. But my concern was that we have, we have budgeted for this fiscal year, fiscal year '25, election funds. We don't have any foregoing any, any changes amongst the council. There is, there are no scheduled elections, so it would be a good year to use those budgeted funds for charter amendments, so we're not doubling up in 2026.
And it's been a number of years since it's been reviewed.
Yes. Yeah, this will be five years now since our charter...
Really, we should be doing it about every five years. And if they come back and say everything's good, they don't want to touch it, then that's great. But, but if they come back with recommendations, then, you know, and we'll put it before the voters, so. So we'll need a amendment, if, correct, to the motion?
We'll need an amendment, and we'll need the names to be filled in. That'll also have to be part of the motion.
We would need an amendment to the...
Yes. For the names tonight?
Yes, ma'am. If, if we're going to move on this charter committee...
If you're going to move on it tonight.
Okay.
If you're, if you're not ready to put the names in and you want to postpone that to your next meeting, you'll have to still vote because you've had a motion and a second. So you just have to vote and, and vote it down, and then it'll come back at the next meeting.
Okay. I honestly do not have a name.
So then we...
We can do it next week. Give me a week. I mean, I could say somebody, but what happens if they decide they don't want to do it? Then we have to do another resolution or something to change the names. Okay, I need a week. I'm sorry.
We have meetings the next two weeks, so...
Yes, that's what I'm doing.
So would you be able to find somebody?
I would prefer to bring this back on the 27th when the city attorney's here. Next week will just be a special call meeting for a public hearing, so I'd prefer to bring it back on the 27th on a regular meeting.
Okay, how can I be a name by 27th?
I'll, I'll do some digging too, see if I can find somebody else that may be interested, so.
And again, I think it's important to just...
Do you have anybody in mind?
I think it's important to just clarify that...
Yeah, I have some...
Yeah, I think it's important to just clarify that it's, it's, it should not be staff that makes recommendations on boards and commissions. That is solely a council function. Okay. I just, we're not, we're not trying to be hands-off at all, but this should solely be a council function. I think it would be inappropriate for staff to come in and make recommendations on, on who, who should be appointed to certain boards. That should be at your discretion.
Okay, so we've got a motion. We have to vote on that motion.
And then I have direction on how to revise this, to take out the language about who are not currently...
Okay, and then we'll readdress it. We'll readdress it on the 27th.
Okay, so we're voting down now, and then we'll bring it back up. Okay.
Okay, would you poll the council?
Yes. Place two.
Oh, no.
Place three. Place four. Place five.
No.
Place six?
No.
Mayor?
No.
Motion not carried.
Don't hear that very often, so.
No.
Okay, next item, Resolution Number 2024-08-02, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas, approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos Steering, Atmos City Steering Committee, ACSC, and Atmos Energy Corp., Mid-Tex Division, regarding the company's 2024 rate review mechanism filing declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the attached settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable and in the public interest, approving an attachment establishing a benchmark for pensions and retiree medical benefits, requiring the company to reimburse ACSC's reasonable rate making expenses, determining that the resolution was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, adopting a savings clause declaring an effective date and requiring delivery of this resolution to the company and the ACSC's legal counsel.
Okay, put that in English, please.
Okay, we need a motion.
But what do we say? No, we have to do the motion first.
Well, just, just do the resolution.
Okay.
Number.
I move, a move we approve Resolution 2024-08-02 as read, whatever that was.
Most remaining seconded.
Okay, so this is a recommendation from, if you all recall, we're, we are members of the Atmos Steering Committee, which is represented by Lloyd Gosling Law Firm. It is their recommendation. They, they negotiate with Atmos on our behalf, and they work directly with Atmos to reach these, reach these negotiated settlements. This is a rate review mechanism that comes before councils every year. Atmos, you know, initially, they'll go out and they'll say, hey, we want to raise rates this much. Typically, it's, it's a fee that most cities are not comfortable with, and we're going to fight back. So Lloyd Gosling fights that back on our behalf. Lots of legal action in between those processes that go back and forth. After completing those, the rate review mechanism process, the negotiated settlements usually reached, and that's what this is here before you today, is that they have reached a negotiated settlement on our behalf, and they are asking that cities approve the negotiated settlement by passage of this resolution. By passage of this, rates will increase. I was trying to find the, the amount. I do not recall the amount, but I do know that rates will increase and it'll improve, increase Atmos funding by 164.7 million. But I cannot recall, it wasn't, let me see. Looks like a dollar 34 is going to be the impact per month to most, to the average residential consumer.
There's, there's, we go up an additional dollar 34.
Dollar, yes.
Okay, okay.
And I'll add, I get asked pretty often by councils, what happens if we don't approve it? And if you don't approve it, then you're not a part of the settlement. You will be charged the higher rate that was not negotiated down. And if you wanted to fight that, you'll have to fight it on your own dime. So that's very...
Yes, we've already got your time.
The good thing is Lloyd Gosling, you know, they're, they're experts in utilities. So I'm certain that they have got the best settlement that they've ever...
Yes. Okay.
Any questions or comments? Would you poll the council?
Place two. Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item's executive session. The city council will convene and to close executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.071-2, consult, consultation with city attorney to seek legal advice regarding potential enforcement actions by the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. The time is 6:41. We're going to executive session. The time is 6:41, we're going to executive session.
Okay, I will call the meeting back to order, the time is 7:01, no action was taken. some comments regarding it on your way in this evening, um, but if you have driven on South Race since the weekend, uh, you may have seen the very interesting striping job that was done on South Race. Um, that contractor was prompt, that was a subcontractor that performed the work. Uh, subcontractor has been pulled off that job immediately and we are working to repair that striping job with a different contractor. So I cannot tell you, he did not really have much of an excuse for why the striping job on South Race looks the way it does. Um, I, he, he, uh, provided several different, uh, kind of segues to, to potential reasons, but none of them were legitimate whatsoever. So I wanted you to be aware that yes, staff is aware that that is a absolutely joke of a job. Um, it is not to our standard whatsoever. That contractor was removed, won't, won't be contracting with him again on those jobs. Um, and we have a different contractor coming in to try to assess and figure out how to correct that hopefully in a straight fashion.
Can we check the sign white?
Um, our crews did perform some striping today. Um, our crews can conduct striping, but just keep in mind our crews don't have the, uh, don't have the ability to do striping as quickly as some of our subcontractors do. That's usually why we try to subcontract these jobs out because they have the big heavy machinery that can do it correctly. Um, our guys usually have to do it by hand. Um, and using the thermoplastic, it takes, it takes a little longer. It's a lot of work for our guys to get out and do. They are taking care of Forest Hill Drive. They striped, um, some new stripe is there at the intersection of Forest Hill Drive and Enon today to really define out where the turn lane is and everything over there. We've had some problems with and they're working on taking that striping all the way through in front of that school as well. So, uh, we're doing that section ourselves. It's straight. It's not a problem. Um, and we'll, we'll hopefully have a contractor out here within the next few days to, to work on South Race. So that's the only update I've got for you guys.
Okay. Uh, Mayor's report. I don't have anything other than the fact, you know, member of the 27th. Let's have some names for the charter review committees. So we can move forward with that. And with that being said, time is 7:04 and we are adjourned.